I think the gang's all here that we're expecting. Even though it's 5:57, unless there's objection, we can go ahead and get started. We'll call this work session to order. Welcome, everyone. Margaret, glad you're here. Unless Jim has any words, take it away.
All right. Well, thank you.
Margaret, let me get you to touch that so we can -- we're recording. I want to make -- now we can hear you.
A red light is what we're looking for?
Apparently, red is good. That means it's hot.
Okay.
It's live.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor, members of council, city manager staff, everybody. We're really happy to be with you here this evening to share some high-level results and process that we've been going through to help Lexington look at their pay systems. I have to get my remote going here. As we get started, I really need to give you our quick Berkeley Group commercial and some quick introductions. I've met many of you before and have worked with you. It's been a pleasure. I'm Margaret Schmidt. Been with Berkeley now about four years, I think. Time flies when you're having fun. I'll introduce my colleague, Jennifer Whistleman. We are both seasoned HR professionals. We're not going to go into how much seasoning, but our experience has been primarily in local government, cities, and that kind of thing. I'm most recently in Lynchburg. Jennifer is most recently the HR Director in the City of Harrisonburg. So, we bring, we think, a pretty good depth of local government HR knowledge. We think that it's a, you know, we pride ourselves on being fairly practical and looking at data and circumstances from a local government perspective. We try to present understandable data, so you will not see a lot of statistical analysis and regression of the mean and those kinds of things. We try to take a more practical approach so that things can be implemented and that people understand it. So, you're very familiar with Berkeley, with especially community planning and land use. Well, the HR arm is a growing component in HR, and we've been working with a lot of your colleagues across the state, and I listed a few of them there. So, we're starting to build a pretty good base of experience there. So, the city talked with us, engaged with us, to look at the pay systems. And the first thing we did was get together with Robbie, who, you know, is out right now, Jen and Jim, to find out why, you know? Why a pay study? Why are we looking at this now? And what the parameters, what the goals might be. And collectively and primarily with the city's help, we identified these goals that, at the bottom line, the city, like every other organization, needs to attract, hire, and retain a qualified workforce. The services you deliver are to your citizens are delivered through your employees. So, we want to make sure that we can have a qualified workforce. We also want, the city wants employees to be able to enjoy everything that Lexington has to offer. You have a great city, very attractive, and we want the employees to be able to be partners and enjoy all of those amenities as well. So, we look, this study is looking primarily at two large components of your pay system. And you're going to hear us talk a lot about averages. We look at the average of the average. We gather data, we look at average of the averages, and that's how we calculate and then compare. But we're, we've looked at individual pay and a goal to increase the competitiveness of that individual pay, what your current employees are making, and then we're also looking at the pay structure. What are realistic targets in both of those areas? So, we had those goals set up. We also wanted to gather not a whole lot of other pay practice data, but a little bit. So, kind of find out what have other organizations been giving in the way of pay increases? How do they handle paid leave? How do they pay their people that have to work on holidays? So, those were the primary questions that we asked there. As we made sure that we were all on the same page with our goals, we started looking at, well, what are the principles that are going to drive this study? What are we looking to accomplish and what can we use as our foundation? So, we absolutely want to be competitive. So, we, the city felt that it was reasonable for them to look, to match the market, you know? That we probably are not going to be able to lead, we're not going to be way out ahead of market averages. We also don't want to be way behind the market averages, but kind of find that sweet spot, which tends to be in that 95 to 100%, 105% of the market. That that's kind of where you want to be to allow for some things. In current circumstances, it's very hard to lag the market at all because employees, unfortunately, are quick to move. And they, in this employee-driven market, they are very quick to say, hey, you know what? I can find another job pretty quickly in this market, so I'm going to go look for that. So, it's a very tight labor market. We have fewer applicants than, and higher expectations than we've ever seen in the HR field. So, that kind of thinks about, talks about awareness. We really wanted to be sure that you and we, we gathered that information about what's happening in the labor market right now. And, as I said, workers are expecting a lot from organizations, probably more than they have at any time in recent history, anyway. So, workers are expecting competitive pay and benefits as a starting point. They are really no longer, we're no longer kind of able to pick and choose. We've been in the local government a long time. We know that local government especially has relied on our benefit package to be a really attractive feature for employees, both stability and a rich benefit package. Our stability is still pretty good, although the pandemic has shown what the challenges can be there. But unfortunately, while the city's benefits and all local governments' benefits are still very valuable, they're less effective for us in recruiting now than they've ever been. Newer workers, not necessarily just young workers, but newer workers, new people coming either to public sector or coming into the workforce, into this kind of work, really don't put a lot of value in retirement. They don't put a lot of value in the inflexibility. They don't like coming into an organization and saying, what? You have a mandatory retirement that I have to put 5% of my pay into? So, you know, there are some challenges with us from a benefit perspective because the benefits are still very expensive for the city. And they just don't have, they eroded, both from a perception and in a real value. So, you know, that, when you couple it with people coming into your workforce don't see themselves working for you for 25 or 30 years, the way employees back in the day perhaps did. So, the world of work has really changed. But some of the key features is that that social contract that employees are expecting has changed. A lot of that has changed by the pandemic, and what we're seeing is it really has, the pandemic just sped things up. So, people are making different choices about their life now than they made before. They're less willing to take less. They want more flexibility. We can't offer a lot of remote work, for example, you know? You can't pick up the trash from your couch. So, we have some conditions that make it inflexible. You know, we, we offer a particular benefit package, medical package. That's a good package. But employees now, or people now are used to being able to shop around. Let me find what just fits me, you know? So, there's, there are just a lot of conditions right now in the workforce that we don't see changing, going back. And a lot of people have been talking about the new normal. We talked with somebody the other day, called it the now-normal. It's, we don't see it going back. So, that's kind of the conditions. And then the last thing we looked at from a principal's perspective is compliance. We want to ensure that not just are our systems equitable and fair across the board, we also have to be compliant with the state law, federal law, things that are changing pretty quickly, primarily the increase in minimum wage. We just had, recently had a minimum wage increase that went to $11 an hour, not as much of a problem for a lot of people. On January 1st of '23, states now, the new mandated minimum wage will be $12 an hour. There is a plan at the General Assembly. Some of it requires future General Assembly action, but that the pay will then go to, minimum to $13.50 to $15 an hour over the next couple of years. So, you need to be positioned in a place where you are compliant now and you'll be compliant into the future. All right. So, I want to just take a second here. And questions, comments, reactions? Yes?
And stop me if you're going to get to this later, but for kind of our peer group that you looked at, is the 5% required into the VRS, is that typical among all the localities?
The 5% contribution to VRS is actually mandatory by state code. So, back in the day, localities could, and that's part of why we say that benefits have eroded a little bit, because back in the day, localities could in fact fund that for their employees. When the, when the hybrid plan came in, in, I believe it was 2014, 2014, the state changed and said that employees had to contribute 5%. And then with the hybrid plan that provides a combined defined benefit and defined contribution plan, the calculation on what the benefit is changed as well. So, but yeah, by code, we have to charge employees that 5%.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir.
You had mentioned about the retirement benefits not being as important as maybe they once were important. In the state of Virginia, if you're, if you're a public employee, is it, is it true that the retirement benefits will travel if you remain public, go to a different county, for example? That there's a travel factor where you don't lose benefits towards the state retirement system?
So, that is, that is true. If, as long as an employee, if an employee is moving from one member agency, one, one agency, whether it's a state agency or a local agency or, you know, other public organizations, if that organization is a member of VRS and an employee moves from one member of VRS to another member of VRS, their benefit does stay with them.
Right. And that's my understanding as well.
Yes.
Separately related to the minimum wage point that you're making, you know, I go to Walmart, and there's a sign up out there that says 16 to 35, starting at 16 up to 35, and that's a far cry from 12.
Well, you're exactly right. And so, even though the state has mandated a new minimum wage and the federal government may be moving that, that way, the market has really outpaced those mandates. So, we are seeing private sector wages increasing substantially. Same kind of thing, I know where I live, you can drive down the street and McDonald's is hiring at $17 an hour. And we can argue the benefits of that kind of a job, but in local government, we ask people to go out and hang on the back of a trash truck, or lay asphalt, or do much more labor-intensive jobs for a lot less money than that. So, the market is driving it probably more quickly than even the mandates are.
And you mentioned, or I mentioned Walmart. Want to throw Target in there. I saw Target starting at 24. They have an ad starting there. And I'm thinking, wow, you know, how are we going to compete with that? And we had a meeting with our school board a while back, not that long ago, and they're talking about the pay, and it was an issue for a little bit in our discussion, for substitutes. And they barely pay $10 an hour to substitutes and whatnot. You know, I'm thinking that I'll be paying 15 an hour for a day. And they're, it's short-term employment, it's not long-term, no benefits, whatnot. And I was always under the impression as well that when you work for government, that the benefits were what made up the difference if you stayed until retirement, that those typically were better than private industry benefits, typically. And what I'm hearing you say is that employees today don't rate those benefits as high as, say, I might rate those benefits and whatnot. And I'm thinking, why is that? And so, does that mean we can cut the benefits and save money if it doesn't matter?
You know, maybe it does, because what employees are looking for is direct pay. I've heard throughout my career, I've heard the phrase, and Jennifer's probably heard the same thing, I can't take the retirement to the grocery store. So, you know, they, while they might value that, that, they don't value it now. They say, okay. And the other, probably the biggest reason why they don't value it is they don't see themselves staying in the same job or with the same employer for 30 years. That, that's, that's one of the things that changed pandemic or not. So, that rich benefit that was provided before 2014 to state and local employees changed in 2014, and it still relies on a 30-year career before you get the full benefit of it.
Unless you're--
So, that's some of the things that have changed.
Unless you're a policeman or a fireman.
In which case, you can retire at 25 years.
That's right. They have a different system.
That's right.
And, and I saw recently, our police chief advised us that there's competition for certified police officers. In Lynchburg, up the pay to 50, whatever it is.
It is, $50,000.
50, okay. Up to 50, and they were at 40 and whatnot. And here, we just raised our police officer's pay substantially, but we didn't raise it to 50. And there to do that--
And we're going to talk specifically about law enforcement here in just a couple of minutes.
All right. I'll be quiet on that, too. All right.
Questions, comments? Mayor?
I was just going to say that the things we're discussing so far are certainly macro.
Absolutely.
Go back to when all of us were looking for our first job, we were competing against people for jobs. Right now, employers are competing for the employees.
Right.
And you can go six miles down the road to Modine, and they'll start you at $24 an hour. You don't have to go to Target or Walmart from that standpoint, but--
And you don't have to be a college graduate.
That's exactly right. So, it, that's the world in which we're living.
Absolutely.
And we have to do a better job of selling ourselves, as well as compensation. It's not mercenary labor that we're working on here.
The other thing that you need to remember is that public pay systems are a little bit different. You know, if you establish, I mean, you have a pay grade and range system, that's your structure. And so, you, you've decided, and as you said, you've just recently raised, raised police, but you have a range for police officers, and it starts at X number of dollars. And so, because of equity, because of your local decisions, you're going to start everybody at, at least that beginning of the range. We see these signs that say, oh, we're going to hire somebody at 15, 17, 24. We don't have any assurance that they're hiring everybody at that rate of pay. We know they're hiring some people at that rate of pay, but they typically don't have that kind of a pay range structure. They hire, private sector hires what, at the rates that they need to, to fill their jobs. And so, there's some slight structural differences in a public, in a public organization as well. And so, in some ways, it's, it's a challenge for you to find that appropriate spot to start your ranges and start your hiring rates so that you're equitable and that you're not picking and choosing, oh, this person I'm going to bring in at $28 an hour, and this person, in the same exact job, I'm going to bring in at 12. There's more flexibility in other systems. Okay.
The other macro point I would make is that the private corporations may or may not employ someone for 40 hours. It may be a 20, so they avoid paying or providing any benefits.
True.
And during the pandemic, many cities and municipalities laid off zero people. Lots of businesses laid off lots of employees. So, it's, it's part of it, I know when I've talked to the city manager, is educating people that we're looking to hire on what we're about and what we offer beyond what, what can I take to the grocery store to buy.
Sure. Yeah. And I don't disagree with you, Mayor.
Yeah.
I guess my point is going to be that most of, most of the qualified employees want both.
Sure.
They want both the stability and the good benefits and competitive pay.
Of course.
And that's the real challenge that you have, is they, they want it all. We all want it all. So--
Dennis.
Yeah, you're exactly right.
I was just going to say, you, you made the point that nowadays, employees are not as interested in benefits. They want the immediate thing. And while that is true for, I'm sure, many employees, it's not true for all employees. And I, I personally feel that, you know, employees that we may be interested in may be those that are willing to defer gratification. I think that's a good sign. So, I, in terms of like winnowing the wheat from the chaff, I think that's kind of an important thing. That's why I'm glad that the state requires that employees of the state contribute 5% to their retirement.
Mm-hmm.
So, anyway, I'm not, I'm not necessarily sure that's a bad thing, and I don't think that we necessarily have to appeal to all employees here.
Yeah. Well, I believe that you're exactly right. There are no universals here. I mean, just as, as the mayor said, many local governments didn't lay off people. Well, I know of a half a dozen who did lay off people and cut pay during the pandemic. So, there's no universals. And, and you're exactly right. You want to find somebody who is going to be loyal to the city, who does want to make this a career, who does want to stay. When you look at, even just using a police officer as an example, five years ago, it would not be unusual for a police department to get two or three or 400 applications. And so, you had that ability to really, let's look through and let's discern, let's, who really wants to do this? Who wants to be here? Those large quantities of applicants don't exist anymore, for a lot of other reasons. But, but you're exactly right. There are no universals. And there are, you know, once somebody gets, starts to approach my age, retirement becomes pretty important to them. It's not as important to them early in their career. And they, but they want more control over it. So, all right, well, let's move on. All right? So, I'll give you, start to dig down into this a little bit. As the mayor said, we are, have been looking at a very macro level, and we'll stay there for a few minutes. But just to give you an idea of the process that Jennifer and I have used as we've worked with, with Jim and Jen and the staff. So, we identify, we first got all of the city's job descriptions, and we looked through that, and we understand your work. And then we identified those jobs for, to go out to, kind of ask the market about those positions. So, we identify the benchmark jobs, which are those jobs that are shared by most of the comparisons. And in, with a workforce your size, that was most of the positions. We were able to actually get data on most. But, but where we can't, you know, we then attach every position to one of those benchmarks. So, we looked at and kind of touched every position in the city. But, so we, we went out to, we did a survey, we did some outreach, we did some FOIA requests. The city already had some data that they and their colleagues had put together. So, we used every method we could to gather both market range averages and individual pay averages. So, once we get that data back, then we start comparing it. We compare it to what is the current situation in Lexington. So, how does Lexington's minimum compare to this average of the market's minimums? How does your actual pay? And then we validate that. We got back together and said, okay, this is what we're finding. How does that fit with your culture, with your goals? So, it's a collaborative process. And then as, as we analyze that, we start to develop some recommendations and have some, again, collaborative, and try to find the best option that balances the data, okay? With what your current situation is. So, these are the comparison organizations that we, we asked for and got data from. We did not get, we did not get data from every single organization for every single position, but we did get robust data. And we, just really quickly, this BLR, that's a, that's a set of data that we as a company purchase, and they take the Bureau of Labor Statistics data, package it nicely for us, keep it updated. So, we're able to get regional, public and private, a lot of private sector data there. We did not, quite honestly, have to use that data much for Lexington because we got good matches from all of these localities. And even the colleges and universities gave us, they didn't give us a lot of information, but they did give us some. And, but, but there were a couple of jobs that we did go out to that resource and find some data. So, the data that we collected really represents a snapshot in time. We asked for this data, collected it in, through January, and it's very credible and accurate at the time, but things change. It's also dynamic. So, you know, just like you are, people are leaving, you're hiring new people, you're promoting people. So, we would get a slightly different set of data if we were to go and ask the same people the same questions today. So, we use this market average as an indicator. You can't, very hard to pinpoint a, this is a particular dollar figure. At the time, it was, but it provides that snapshot for you. These are people that you are in competition with. They do the same kind of work you do. They deliver the same kind of services. They're, when, when people want to work in the public sector, they're looking at these organizations when they look at you. They're also the people that you're most likely to lose people to, who want to stay in the public sector. But we're confident that the data is fairly valid. We got sufficient amounts of data. It was consistent, so we didn't see any huge outliers, you know, where one locality is paying 30% more than everybody else. You know, very consistent data and, and really similarly structured. So, you know, if we asked, we, these organizations have police departments, they have public works departments, so, and they have similar positions. So, we're, we're pretty confident in the data. And then we're going to talk now of really high-level results, and we're going to dig into it a little more deeply. But we'll at least talk about the two areas that we looked at, which was primarily pay structure and individual pay. Our recommendations are going to lean more towards individual pay and look at structure judgments or structure adjustments as perhaps a phase two. But at the structure, overall, the city's pay ranges lag the market by about 15% at the minimum, which means your, your pay ranges, your pay range minimums are, on average, 15% less than, than that competitive market, than these people. When we gathered their pay and put an average of the averages, the city is about 15% below at the minimum. You're about 20% below at the maximum, and that's a feature of your pay ranges being fairly narrow. Their 50-year ranges are 55% from minimum to maximum. Most often, what we find in most of these market matches were between 60 and 65%. The maximum is, quite honestly, less important. The maximum is certainly important for earning potential for an existing employee, tells them kind of how far their pay might progress. The minimum is where you greet the market. That's where you try to recruit. So, that's kind of where your, your pay ranges are. We're going to focus quite a bit on the individual pay. So, your individual pay, again, high-level, overall average is about, is at 11% below the market average. Now, there's a lot of variance in there. You have, it, that's a mathematical overall average. You have actual employee pay that ranges from 61% of the market to as high as 133% of the market. Certainly, the people, most of your employees that are exceeding the market like that are long-term senior employees. They've, they've been here a while, they've demonstrated their loyalty. So, from that overall data, we, again, high-level recommendations. We think it makes sense for you to have a phased approach, figure out what's most important first, so what are your highest priorities? And then consider, and in that, consider options for addressing individual pay competitiveness first. Try to pay some general wage increase, a general compensation increase that will keep your competitive pay as competitive as you can, and then work towards those competitive pay ranges. A little detail about the structure, although I says, I said we're not going to go into it too deeply, but this just kind of gives you, digs into that a little bit deeper. We, we actually, in this study, we did a combined survey. Jim and Spencer over in, at the county, kind of got together and said, can you do one survey and then split the data and analyze it separately? So, we got a little savings by doing one survey and then splitting the data, and that's what we did. So, we, we actually surveyed a total of 74 jobs, only about 60 of which are the cities. So, after we got the data, then we, then we split them out. But, so while the overall is how many we surveyed, these boxes identify just city positions. So, you have 41 positions that have a minimum below 90-- So you have 41 positions that have a minimum below 90%. They range 66 to 89 or so. So just to give you an example, your maintenance construction worker, one, that's a job that you have a fair number of employees in, probably six, eight, maybe, in that job. That average is down around 87% of the market minimums. It's jobs. Now, we're not talking about people here. We're just talking about the job itself. You have 14 positions that are more where we'd want them to be, between 90 and 100. But even of those, you know, we have them ranging from 90 to 99. And the example is our firefighter EMT is pretty competitive. That job is at 96% of the market. And then we have six jobs that are over the market that are at 100% or higher. And those range, you see, there's variance in all of these, ranges from 103 to 111. So for example, the accounting technician, that's a few people in that job, it leads the market. So we did not look much at part-time jobs. So we, primarily this is full-time jobs. And our overall recommendation is to, you want to get to the structure, but it's probably more important to look at your actual pay right now. So we're gonna do that same deeper dive into your individual pay. Now, we're making this switch now from jobs that don't really, you know, it's not, we know people are in those jobs, but we weren't talking about jobs. Now, we're talking about individual employees and how their actual pay compares to that average of the averages in the marketplace. So we looked at 78 current full-time city employees. This data does not include the city manager. His job is by agreement with you. It also does not include a probation officer that the state sets their pay, and you don't have a lot of control over that. But it does include your other employees, your other full-time employees. So of those employees, you have 37 whose pay, actual pay, is less than 90% of that market average actual pay. 20 of them are less than 80%, probably the most problematic there. 17 are in that 80 to 90. We have 41 employees' pay who are above 90%. 16 in that 90 to 99. And 25, again, usually long-term employees, that's pay is at 100% or higher. A competitive system, you would expect most to be in that 95 to 100, to 105, is considered a competitive system. Now, you brought up there's no universals, and that's exactly right here as well. There are some very valid reasons why an employee might be making less than the market average. They might be new. They might have come to the organization with less skill than you might expect from a fully qualified. So you hire them at the minimum. Even having a range 55% wide, you're not gonna be, you know, you're not hiring people at the market. You want them to grow and get competitive. But over time, again, looking at your averages, you, on average, should be in those 90s. So that's kind of where we are there. So now I want to, again, pause. This seems like a lot of data. Jennifer, I've been looking at this for six, eight weeks, and so it's a little more familiar to us. But what questions or comments might you have?
Members of council, have any questions?
Well, maybe we'll get to this, but I mean, the employees that are less than 90% that you, how many, 16, how many were there?
77.
Oh, okay. Well, so the 20 that were less than 80%, for instance, in what sort of categories are we talking about? Are they like?
I'll get that. Give me one minute. That's in the next section. We'll let you know. All right. So, shall we move on? Okay. So this is that very question. So we first looked at turnover. Robbie sent us the city's turnover experience over the last year, two years. And so we looked first at those jobs to see, well, is there an indicator that these jobs that are turning over more frequently are also significantly behind the market? And there is no direct, we can't find any direct cause and effect. Again, it's an indicator, and we think that sometimes, yes, it is. So these are some of the jobs. So those maintenance construction workers down at that 88% of, 87. something, those are jobs that are in very high demand, quite honestly, just like police officers, for different reasons. Commercial driver's licenses, doing labor-intensive work. I mean, but they are also in very high demand. So it makes sense that you're gonna see some turnover there, and then where there's maybe some correlation to a lower-than-market pay, then, yes, that's more of an indicator. Your police officers, while 92% is fairly competitive, somebody, I think the mayor, somebody mentioned what Mr. Alligood, I think, you know, you go over the mountain, and Lynchburg is paying 50. And they've put in an incentive plan to hire certified officers. That's attractive to people. So, and plus, there's just flux in that, you know. We don't know for sure that your police officer is left to go be a police officer somewhere else. We're finding police officers leaving the profession as much as anything. So, you know, your corporals, same kind of way, mid, kind of that first-level supervisor, their pay is kind of low compared to theirs. Your sanitation workers are low, and you're losing those. And motor equipment operators, their pay is in pretty good shape, but the market is red-hot for motor equipment operators. So if, you know, we're all faced with, if somebody wanted to make a move, now's the time to do it. So, but beyond where your turnover was, where are other kind of job families that we're seeing here? So your utilities positions, on average, are low compared to the market. Your assistant, you're all really kind of, the trend is that all your operational positions tend to lag the market. So your supervisors and assistant operational supervisors, so this is like your, this would be your utility supervisor, your cemetery and parks supervisor, your sanitation supervisor, there's five of them. Anyway, so it's those jobs and the assistant, those tend to be low. Your department directors, not a lot of them, but they're low. Your financial and administrative support jobs tend to be high. We're also seeing in the market that we're still seeing a lot of applicants for those administrative support jobs. They are not in the group that is, you know, driving wages up. They also tend to be fairly long-term employees for you. And then, and so you see kind of where we are here, your sergeants and your public safety is in, they're fairly competitive. Fire especially, and fire is not suffering, are experiencing the same issues that law enforcement are. Does that tend to answer your question? Where are the employees that are there? So let's talk a little bit about law enforcement. It's definitely more than pay. We don't want to suggest that it's only a pay issue because, you know, we read the news, we pay attention, we know that it is more than that. There are very unique challenges in law enforcement right now in our country, in our society, even in our state. Certainly, there are societal pressures, this varying degree of support for public safety and for law enforcement. There's certainly increased danger. There are more police officers being killed in the last two years, last year and a half, than the profession has seen. It's always been a dangerous profession. You know, Jennifer and I were talking earlier, you know, you think, oh, well, we're this, we're this small community, we're pretty safe here, you know. My guess is Covington thought that on Monday, too. You know, so it's hitting us all. And it's hitting the people who are doing this work. And so those are things that pay doesn't fix. As I said, we're seeing high turnover rates and fewer applicants. But as I mentioned, it's not just people leaving to go be a police officer, leaving Lexington to go to the county to be a sheriff's department officer or sheriff's deputy, or going to Lynchburg. Many of them are leaving the profession. And they're just finding other things to do that are less dangerous, that they are less negative, that they're not in the media. So we're, pay is one of the few things that we can do to try to keep them. It's not the only thing. Creating a supportive environment, making sure that they know they're valued. All of that positive environment is gonna help keep every employee regardless of the pay. But then there are significant market pressures. And it's fast-moving. It really is. What we're seeing across the state is that, you know, we talked about that structure where you have a minimum for a police officer and a maximum for a police officer. Most localities are not changing those grades or those ranges. What they're doing is they're establishing a starting pay well into that range. So if we talk about Lynchburg just raised their minimum for a police officer to $50,003, right? They didn't move their minimum. The minimum of their range, if you look on their pay plan, still says, what does it say, 38, I think, something like that. So we haven't really been able to use the minimum of the range to be a really good indicator for police. It's more what are people hiring? What's the starting pay for them? So we're seeing those reactive decisions. I talked to another locality we're working with this week. She said, we gotta do something with our police. I said, why? Because seven of them came, and they only have 10. Seven of them came to the chief and said, if you don't raise our pay, we're leaving. So there's a leverage that those who want to stay in the profession have that they haven't, they've always, police have always had a bit of a leverage, but they have even more now. So, and then we talked about the incentives. We talked, you know, many are publicly saying, if you're a certified officer, our minimum now, we'll use Lynchburg as an example, our minimum is $50,000. If you have one, if you're certified and you have a year of experience, we'll hire you at 54. If you have two years of experience, we'll hire you at 56. If you have three years, it does start to come down, fortunately. So, you know, public safety, whether it's police or fire, has historically been a closed system. People come in at the bottom, or they come in at the top. So they can be, they come in as a recruit, or they come in as the chief. We started to see that change before the pandemic. And certainly now, with these market pressures, we're seeing it much more. You know, I worked in Lynchburg. I know that if a certified officer wanted to come to Lynchburg, they started as a PO1, as a recruit. They don't do that anymore. So we're seeing that kind of very fast-moving kind of dynamic that while we don't want to be reactive, we have to be a little bit reactive to do that.
When you looked at our law enforcement pay, did you consider, or is it, does it make sense to consider the opportunity to earn overtime? Or does it make sense to consider their work schedule if our officers have a long week and a short week, if that's standard in the industry amongst the other municipalities that you looked at? But overtime, and obviously they're working to earn the overtime.
Right.
It's not what they're hired at a week. But, but sometimes officers appreciate the extra hours because it's more, more money.
Absolutely.
And so was that taken into account at all?
We certainly look at the structure of other organizations. So some of the things that we know from our experience and with this group is, what are scheduled hours, for example? Does an officer work an eight-hour shift or a 12-hour shift? Overtime is an absolute feature of police work. There is really overtime that's unavoidable because of court. So they get paid overtime for court, and then there are many opportunities for overtime. And every, every department has that, and the shorter staff they are, the more opportunities there are. Some people appreciate that and like it. Some people, at the end of their 12-hour shift, they want to go home. They don't want more. But, so certainly, when we look at actual pay, because that is one thing we say, what are you actually, on average, what are you actually paying your police officers? It does not include overtime. It is, it is that credible comp like you would report to VRS. But, but we do know that all departments have overtime and primarily, or court and regular overtime. Extra duty is another thing that police officers have. Police officers have a lot of ways to increase their total income. And, and the things that we can control the most are their base pay.
And I think that's something, even though, not to jump to fire and EMS, but some fire and EMS might be full-time in one department and part-time in a separate department within a 30 or 60-mile range.
Yes.
Just, again, maybe it's not pertinent to our discussion, but in the interest of kind of fully understanding the compensation of certain kinds of city employees, I think it's worth acknowledging at least.
Absolutely. And that's, we've had some communication with your fire chief, and he's concerned about that part-time rate, that it, because he does rely on people who work someplace else to come and work because you don't have a huge fire staff yet. You're looking to build that. And so, yeah, looking at that part-time rate is important. We did look at part-time firefighters. It's not in this data, but we do have that, because that was an important thing for him to know. Can I get the part-time people that I need? And, you know, then, and then, of course, you know, you always have seasonal things that are less important. But part-time firefighters for Lexington is important. So, so the law enforcement, and you're really, you know, you kind of jumped ahead here, too. I'm gonna stop again.
I was going to interrupt you for just a moment. We do have a regular scheduled meeting at 7:00, and we're about 6:40. I don't know how much material you have left, but
We don't have a lot.
I want to make sure we get it all covered.
Absolutely. So any other questions?
Quick, quick comment. Lynchburg, I want to go back to Lynchburg. I had heard that even with their increase in pay that they offered starting certified policemen, that they're still understaffed, and that the bonus program didn't fully work. Is that true?
That's my understanding as a citizen of Lynchburg, is knowing they've always been short-staffed, and, you know, there are never enough police for a chief. I know that. But yes, they still challenged, they're still challenged to fill the vacancies that they have. Even they, they offer a hiring bonus, and they're still challenged. So we're gonna move to now, what are some of those overarching recommendations that we're suggesting from the results of this study? And obviously, the first is to tailor those, those recommendations to Lexington's culture and goals. We think there's a lot, there's agreement that addressing current employee pay that is well off the market first. Address those unique law enforcement challenges as best you can. Implement over maybe two years. We wouldn't recommend that you take longer than two years, because by the time you're implementing something in a third year, you're already so far out of date that it's, you're behind, well behind the power curve again. You want to make sure that all of your employees either, that their actual pay is at least at the new, at the new minimum wage. And, and address those pay structure competitiveness as you're able. So, quite honestly, it's easier to keep the employees you have than to find new employees. So it's kind of the primary focus on try to deal with your, your current employees. To get a little more specific in that, I mean, adjust the pay of the employees who are less than market in a way that makes sense against that market average. And it's got to be affordable. We know that you don't have unlimited resources. And then we think it's worth your while to try to, to get as close to 100% of market for your public safety employees as you can. You can't ignore the rest of your workforce, though. So whether it's bonuses or something that says, because, you know, we looked at, there's 30, 40-some employees who are, who are more competitive. You don't want to make them feel devalued. So a general wage increase would be the highest, one of the highest recommendations we can make. What we're hearing around this region is, most organizations are trying to plan in a 5% increase, general compensation increase. We know, we expect, if the state budget goes through, either version, that there's going to be significant increases for teachers and for state employees and for state police and sheriffs. So they're projecting fairly low, but fairly low, I'm sorry, fairly large increases. But a general compensation increase is gonna, would apply to all employees. It helps you maintain your competitiveness where you have it. And then it also advances employees, again, away from the minimum, which is also really important to employees, that they're not stuck at the minimum. Your current ranges, we think while they need to be improved, will accommodate those actions. You won't be having a lot of people bumping up at the maximum, but, but help you to, as I said, move people away from the minimums and, and get those actual pay rates in a better, better spot. And then if there is any job that's, that does not meet that minimum qual, minimum wage by January 1st, you need to move them, you know. So our next steps is based on this discussion, and staff's bumping this information up against budget, is to develop some very specific actions. If there, sometimes you do those things, and, and you're looking to do the best you can, and there are unintended consequences. So we want to look at those unintended consequences that might be there before final action is made. And once your final actions are made, then the city will communicate, need to communicate that. We can help with that, but not really our role. And ultimately, we will provide Jim with a, and Robbie and Jen with a written report that includes all the data and, and probably more detail than they would like to know. All right. All right. So in the back of your packets, uh, and we're not gonna go over them, but after this last question slide, there are a bunch of definitions that, that just kinda help you understand the context of the way that we did the methodology, the way we did this work. So there, unless anybody has any specific questions, uh, there're just, there're things that you can look at, at your leisure. All right, I'm finished.
Very good.
What other questions might you have?
Uh, just, perhaps, uh, an observation slash question. Uh, when my, uh, sweet charming daughter was admitted to UVA and went for orientation, the speaker said, congratulations, every one of you in this room graduated in the top ten percent of your class. No longer can all of you still be in the top ten percent of your class. So when we look at these averages, and we're all striving, 'cause other communities are striving to be, um, in the one-hundred, uh-
Sure.
...piece, we're, we're conceptually getting into a bidding war with ourselves. I mean, it is, is part and parcel, so, um, I just remind us all that as, as we work, we want to, uh, provide fair compensation, um, and respectful compensation to our employees. So as we go through the budget process, um, it, it's interesting, and so, uh, I think we need to be careful on what we, uh, state as our target that we're working towards as, uh, what the market will bear, realizing that, um, I've made this comment before, there may be a hundred open positions and only seventy-five employees that are available. Everybody's not gonna get an employee, so.
I mean, you're exactly right, and the, you know, the, and I, I guess the other, the other side of that, that I would offer, is the city currently supports a market-based pay system, and so while the market, uh, you're right, not everybody can be on average, and there's legitimate reasons why not every employee in every position is, is right at the average, but it's a pretty strong indicator of how you're gonna be able to recruit and retain your employees.
Right.
So that's, uh, and, but it, in any case, it has to be responsible from a fiscal perspective.
I think we have about five minutes. Ms. Charleaga, did you have a question?
Uh, more an observation, more an observation. One of the things that city council is dealing with now is constructing or, or contracting ultimately to build, uh, apartment units, maybe, or units, whatnot, and one of the developers has suggested a fee, a rent structure that starts at nine hundred dollars monthly for a one-bedroom apartment there. And so I looked up what the contribution on a normal percentage calculation would be, that anybody's supposed to be able to contribute as a percent of their income, it was thirty percent in there. So thirty, and thirty percent is kind of, kind of a number in that range in there. If it's at twelve, then that worked out to be, just by a little scratching here, that worked out to be, uh, uh, seven hundred. And, uh, six hundred, six hundred, I take it back, six hundred, I made it, I made a mistake. Anyway, six hundred, and, uh, which, uh, would make the nine hundred, and fifteen dollars an hour, if you just round off, say, two thousand hours a year, is gonna be thirty thousand. So, so even, even at twelve, they couldn't move into a one-bedroom unit.
Market-rate apartment.
Market-rate apartment.
Right.
So which, which extends to what we're talking about now, what level do we need to be for people to be able to live in a one-bedroom apartment, market-rate?
In Lexington.
In Lexington.
Yeah, and that's, that's the key. I mean, you know, I think you, you struggle with affordable housing regardless, and, and you want your employees to be able to live here where the community they serve, and it takes more money, as you've said, so. Final questions, comments? Yes, ma'am?
Just a comment about this topic. Uh, we're finding in affordable housing that with the increases in pay, when people are being paid fifteen, sixteen, eighteen dollars an hour, it's pricing them out of the affordable housing market, too. So they're in a catch-22.
They are. And, and, you know, and I think the mayor mentioned, you know, with, with, uh, private-sector wages going up, perhaps the number of hours that someone works, the number of employees that they have might go down. Uh, you know, I, I would submit that they have more flexibility in how they deliver service than you do. You have a certain number of homes, you gotta collect the trash from those number of homes. So it's, um, you don't have perhaps as much flexibility. All right. Well, we've enjoyed being here, we've really appreciated your attention and your interaction. It is great to be standing where I am and, and see your interest and to have, hear your questions, so.
You're not missing Zoom?
Yeah.
Just kidding.
No, I, I still prefer Zoom because I don't have to actually get dressed. Uh, in my real clothes. I can wear sweats, and that's my, my idea of, of the right kind of clothes is sweats. So, but I do appreciate your attention, thank you very much.
Thank you. Margaret, Jennifer, thank you all for being here.
With staff to finalize.
Terrific, terrific. We appreciate your, uh, support of staff and our entire city, and look forward to making strides to make Lexington a very desirable and attractive place to work. Uh, with that, I will, uh, close out our close, or I'm sorry, our work session, and we will reconvene for our regular meeting at seven o'clock.